We're going live here, you guys. Call us mean the order, March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two, please stand up, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please take the.
Member James Blair. Member Joseph Richardson. Member Joshua Crossman.
Here.
Member Holly Smith.
Here.
Member Brian Hess.
Here.
Member Lynn Roy.
Here.
Member Terry Kaminsky. Your Joe Pinto.
Here. All right, I am number two, agenda approval, can I entertain a motion?
We approve the agenda.
Second, by council member Blair. Any discussion? All in favor? The opposed? Some carries. All right, I remember three special presentations, it's gonna be a legislative recap and wasn't much this year, this was a supplemental budget year, which means it's the second half of the biennial budget similar to ours. And you know, we have a two-year budget, first year we do the the big budget and second year we just kind of do a small supplemental similarly. In the state they also do that. And so there wasn't too much funding request that we made this year, we did request fifty thousand for a dog park to help lower the cost for us. And so we did get that, so thank you to our local delegation, our representatives and senator. So we got fifty K in the capital budget. We also indirectly affects us is in the transportation budget, there's funding from WASD. And it's not spelled out as clearly, they can kind of do what they want with that money, but it's kind of earmarked towards three roundabouts. And those are the ones that we've kind of been discussing a little bit at seven oh two and five oh seven in McKenna. And that's that that main intersection right there in front of the elementary school, five oh seven in Vale Road. And that's the intersection right by Stewart's right up that hill. And then the bigger one by five corners, which is right by Arco and Starbucks. And so those are the three main ones that are like gonna be funded, any questions on this?
Roundabout that you just said the by five corners, that's gonna replace the light?
Correct.
I just.
Yeah. I believe these are scheduled next year, but don't quote me on that, I'll I'll update council though as soon as WASD gives us some concrete on it.
Yes, when when you are working with legislators on this, could you please make sure that they work very hard to make sure the roundabouts are large enough to handle trucks with fifty-three foot trailers?
Yeah, that's yeah, absolutely.
We have that issue with the one.
Yeah. Yeah, so when that one was put in, it it was still fairly new, I guess, for roundabouts about ten years ago almost now, almost seven years, but. Yeah, it's something that I've been stressing to them as well and through our public meetings with them and our open house is something we've been stressing the need to have a wider ones for the semis. And absolutely, the one thing that they do, they do tell us that they do that they are working on it, it's not new technology, but it just basically sloped that middle island a little bit more. So trucks can go ahead and go on that a little bit easier, go to the big ones, any other questions on any of that? Our next big ask will be next year and that's gonna be million dollars for membranes for the bioreactor, membrane bioreactor upgrades. We have to get ten of those things and they cost a lot, I think they're about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a pop. And so if we can get a million dollars, that's that's into our loan, we've already taken out and we can, you know, potentially lower some rates. I shouldn't I shouldn't say that because he's gonna yell over here, but it's something that hopefully we get due later on and. Anything we can do to ease off the burden off the local taxpayers, it's it's gonna help us, so that's that's the idea. Other than that, that was the biggest ask. We are gonna try to get Representative Barkis and Wilcox in here for legislative update from them as well and their thoughts on what happened for the this past session as well, in their perspective. So we're working on get that hopefully next year, the following, other than that, any other questions regarding it? All right, we'll move on to item number four, public comment, we do have one, is there any other public comments, doesn't look like it, did you want to make a comment as well?
Not at this time, thank you.
Alrighty, then Mickey, would you please step on to the podium, state your name and go ahead and get into it.
Okay, Mickey, you'll have the bowling alley. I know there's been a lot of controversy on the murals, that type of murals and whatever, the bowling alley. He started working with me over a year ago to do something, I support murals in the town because every town I've been into that has them, you remember it. And so I feel it's more of a tourist attraction and something you're gonna be bypassing that street and so I'm thinking, well, find something new, different, interesting. And on one of the biggest billboards in town, which is nothing up there right now, you know, we've been openly because we've been open and so I usually put a advertising advertising the bowling. But the mural was interesting, it was different. And I didn't realize it would become a little bit controversial, but it did. But the reason that I agreed with that mural is that I don't think people realize that inside we're a little different already because that type of bowling alley isn't traditional. It's a antique type bowling alley and we went really creative with it, different, was it not your standard bowling alley? And so we even, and so we have cosmic bowl that we do on Friday and Saturday nights. So that was kind of cosmic bowl on the side to attract them to the bowling alley, ask what's going on, so. So I thought it was a good idea and actually I didn't pay any attention, there are masking units that we picked out fourteen years ago, actually kind of matched that mural, which was, it kind of blew me away, so I didn't pay any attention, so I'm just saying that, yeah, I'm willing to try something new. I don't know what the funding is on it, it's it's there, I think murals are are good because they're interesting, they're different. I like to do things different, in the racing days, we brought in school bus figure eight racing and we ran the first five hundred lap NASCAR race ever to have Northwest and only one being Northwest. So I'm hoping to try new ideas and see how they work and that was just.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, that's.
All right, sorry Mickey, is there any questions or comments? All right, thank you for your comment. Well, we will figure out what happened right there, wasn't recording. For those that are just joining, we we had a call to order, agenda approval, special presentation regarding legislative recap, which included fifty thousand for the dog park in the capital budget, roundabouts including seven oh two and five oh seven in McKenna, five oh seven in Vale, which is by by Stewart's and then the five corners by the Arco and Starbucks. So yeah, sorry if folks didn't didn't hear all that for the first, what, four minutes or six minutes, I can't really see what time it is, but. Eight minutes-ish, but all right, now that we've had public comment, we'll go on to item number five, the consent agenda.
I love that we approved the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion? And this is just about the March eight regular meeting minutes. No discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. All right, item number six, this is gonna, we will be going into an executive session to discuss negotiations with a patrol order police for twenty minutes, pursuant to RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero or A and four B. And for the purposes of this, we will go and retreat, retreat, we will go into retire to the conference room, discuss the negotiation process, what happened and. We'll come back here in twenty minutes, so for those watching, just tuned in, we'll be back in twenty minutes, the audience, happy to stay here for the next twenty minutes, then we'll be right back. Thank you. Alrighty, we'll move on to item number seven, new business. Oh, sorry, calling the meeting back to order at six thirty-two. Under seven, number or number seven, new business, we have FOP collective bargaining agreement from two thousand and twenty-four or twenty-two, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four. Chief Stansel, we'll go ahead and brief it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a little information summary on the contract, Young Police Commission personnel represented by the FOP, which is a fraternal order of police. We currently have fourteen police personnel under the agreement. Previous agreement expired on December two thousand and twenty-one and was negotiated as a one-year extension from the original two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty agreement. Negotiations and outcomes were focused on providing a fair contract to our officers based on comparable cities and their respective employment agreements. The negotiated agreement provides the opportunity for the city of Young to retain and recruit high-quality officers while staying within the boundaries of negotiation as established by the Young City Council. With that, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Blair.
Move to approve the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four FOP collective bargaining agreement.
Second by Councilmember Smith, is there any further discussion on this?
Excited.
All right, we will go do a a roll call vote just because it's a big contract or a a union contract, so I'm starting with Councilmember Blair, how do you vote?
Yes.
House member Richardson.
Yes.
House member Crossman.
Yes.
House member Smith.
Yes.
House member Hess.
Yes.
House member Roy.
Yes.
House member Kaminsky.
Yes.
Alright, see unanimous vote, motion passes.
Thanks.
All right, under new business, seven B professional service agreement, final design of Southeast Reservoir, RH two incorporated, Cody Colt, please take it away.
Awesome, and you'll notice Patrick Hughes, our project manager slash city engineers, on the call to answer any technical questions I might miss.
Hey, Pat.
So before council today is a public professional service agreement with RH two to design our southeast reservoir. As you know, with water rights on the verge of being active, there are a couple things that have to happen at the near the same time, one is our storage capacity needs to increase. So as soon as we get water rights, we'll then be the storage limit and we have to have more storage, so this is anticipation to reaching that storage limit and getting this designed and built before we need it. The idea is if this is designed and built in the next year, then by the time we need to actually tap into these water rights, it'll already be there and we don't have to worry about rushing and building that later. I'll entertain any questions, specifics of where the property is or anything like that, I know the address is located on there, but.
Any questions? Councilmember Blair.
So three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's just to design it.
Correct, design the entire water tank, the system going to it, the grading of the property, what the elevations need to be, the site improvements, all of that, yes. Just to give you a piece of mind, council, this was budgeted for by the previous council in this biennial budget, it's actually, I think we budgeted more than this, do you remember the number off the top of your head, Pat?
I don't, but the the number is actually pretty, pretty reasonable compared to the anticipated cost of the tower of the of the tank, so. I'm fine.
Council, before you budgeted more than was needed, we just assumed the highest number possible, so this is under the budgeted amount for this design, so this is already budgeted for.
Is, do we already have, I'm assuming we already have existing reservoirs or anything like that here?
So we have a well, we have the water, big water tank that you see over its, our public works building, not this one, and then we have downtown wells. So the southwest well can or serve as a reservoir or holding site and the the big water tank can hold the the water target.
Is this gonna be similar to that water tower?
No, this will be more of a stand pipe that maybe you've seen in McKenna, maybe a bigger though version of that, we'll probably do some kind of similar design that we have like Southwest well where it won't be just a steel thing, we'll have some kind of tree scape or something, so the distance it looks comparable and nice, so. And the location, if you don't know, will be directly behind Walmart, there's a apartment complex that we've been working with to kind of divide off some of the property they couldn't build on because of flood zones, so that's where we're deciding to build this water tower or this.
This, is this one where previous designs could be reused?
This one's kind of specific specifically for what it needs to be done, obviously there's some similarities, they can lean on design work that's been done for other towers, but the location of this one poses some challenges. The water lines we laid last year, the water main upgrades are there already in anticipation for this, so there are some things that can reuse, but a lot of it will have to be designed from scratch.
Are there any other questions, Councilmember Kaminsky?
I move that we authorize Mayor DePinto to sign a professional services agreement with RH two, Inc. in the not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred for final design engineering services for the southeast reservoir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Crossman, is there any further discussion, Councilmember Hess?
I just want to make sure I heard correctly, that part of the design that they're going to be doing is the landscape portion, so it doesn't, it's not just barren land, power and all like that, correct?
Yeah, they'll also be doing landscape design that'll include fences, that'll include our landscape requirements, they have, they will follow our code for landscape requirements and all of that, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion seconded. We'll do a voice call, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's. Thank you, Pat. You're back. Scotty. All right, on to number nine, updates, overheads, Todd Stansel, chief city administrator.
A couple updates going on here, start with finance, they're doing accounts payable interviews next week for the part-time accounts payable position. They have some excellent candidates, they're excited about that, Stephanie's been working on the annual report, which is due by the second week of May, so she's need even that, getting the annual report finished. In the HR department, I already mentioned, we're doing ASME discussions and negotiations, we'll continue those tomorrow. And hopefully we can have a successful completion to those, in the police world, I mentioned we have a new officer that joined us as a lateral officer, she started her field training today. And so she'll be in a field training capacity for at least eight weeks and at that, at that point, should be evaluated to go on the road as a solo unit or we'll do a little bit more field training depending upon where she's at. We're also in a final process and provided a conditional offer to an additional entry level candidate. And so we're optimistic if he can get through the second part of the background, he would enter the academy in the June timeframe, Rob?
May, June.
In the May-June timeframe would be the next academy date that he would get in, and just as a reminder, we have two entry level candidates in the academy right now with the graduation date, I believe in the middle of May. They will be out of the academy for that and entry level officers will go through, they go through a fourteen-week field training program once they get out of the academy. So with our two new officers that are in there graduating May, we'll have them available to us as a solo unit by September this year. Everyone's probably heard about the pursuit that occurred over the weekend, it hit us pretty hard in the vehicle department, we lost two vehicles in that, two vehicles will, at least one will be totaled for sure. More than likely, the the second vehicle will also be totaled, it was fortunately, no one was injured, that could have turned out incredibly worse than it did based on the actions of that driver. But at this point, we are wiped out of two vehicles, it is not a good time to buy a new vehicle, if anyone is in the market for buying a car, you realize the delay in getting that. Rob reached out to to some folks that that he's familiar with and they found two two thousand and twenty-two police hybrid interceptor vehicles in Idaho that we have since secured. And they will be being brought back for us, they were about the only two left in a three-state radius for these cars. And so we have, will, one of the cars will be purchased through just the insurance of the one total and the other one will come out of our emergency and ER and R fund that was already established for the replacement of vehicle. So no additional money will come out of any general fund, or do you think you replace these, insurance will cover and then ER and R money will pay the gap to get these cars.
Explain to council and public about the ER ER R fund, why we have it.
Yeah, so the way we started the ER and R fund about seven or eight years ago, I think, seems like, and so how it works is the vehicles are paid for initially upfront. They're not financed, they're paid for upfront and then we put money into an account every year we have the vehicle, so our vehicles are set up on an eight-year replacement cycle. So when we buy a vehicle, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars for the next eight years, X amount of money goes into this account where after the eight years is up, enough money is in that account to buy the car outright and to replace that car. Whatever we get out of the vehicle, be a sale, in this case, loss insurance, that money all goes back into our ER and R fund. Whatever we purchase that's under the ER and R amount that's in there, that stays into this equipment repaired replacement fund. We do the same thing for our computers in our city and throughout the entire city, all of our computers are set up on an ER and R fund as well, and so that is how these cars are replaced. And in this case, it's a lifesaver that we had to do because we're literally out of cars, at this point, there there are no spare cars. And so we're just extremely fortunate to get these two, we do have two new ones that we ordered in November, those are still coming in in the May timeframe. And those are already replacing existing vehicles, but these other two will be purchased out of the ER and R to get here to give us a little bit of breathing room until we can get some other cars. So that's what I have, I know Cody covered the public services a little bit, I don't need to really go into anything that unless you have anything else.
One quick thing. What? So just, we're gonna do an event update, a summer event update on the next council meeting, the study session, but there is a couple events coming up in the park, specifically like an Easter event and some other things coming up in the next week, so just keep your eyes out for all the events happening in the park throughout the summer, the bathrooms are open in the park, we've got them fixed and functional, please do not blow them up again. That's, that'll be, I'll cover that in our next meeting, I just wanted to talk about the fence, because some are happening before our next meeting, so.
Okay, any other questions for me? Oh, we did communications and outreach. Recreation and communications outreach coordinator interviews yesterday and half the day today, we've narrowed it to the top three and we'll do final interviews next Tuesday. And after that point, we will have a communications and outreach, community outreach coordinator onboard. Or whatever the title is, I think I dropped it over here. Recreational communications coordinator.
Listen up.
Let's go with that, okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Updates, Councilmember Blair. Councilmember Richardson.
I got nothing, just appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Crossman.
Public Services Committee, and I was hit one thing by, might have missed, May twenty-eighth, right, Memorial Day, the city park upgrades will be done and a splash hour will be open, so I'll be, we'll see all that happen. And that is stuff that's coming down.
Cool, Councilmember Smith.
I attended my first Southeast Thurston Fire Authority meeting and that was really good because it was the first one, I didn't have a whole bunch of notes, they are concerned about the fuel prices, obviously. And then starting next month, we're gonna start meeting in person, so forward to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Russ.
See, I met with the intercity transit authority, their staff and had some good conversations with them, finding out what it, what all the various departments do, so learned how to leverage them to help Young itself, advocating for Young to do some things. We have the regional housing commission meeting tomorrow and in reference to the public service meeting, we had good discussions. The planning commission had their meeting yesterday, they were talking about upgrade, changing some of the codes in reference to the the residential zoning. Well, as. And then also there's. City park update already done, we also had a discussion in reference to. One of the big discussions we had amongst the council members and the staff there was talking about the Young Downtown, the historic district. We've done studies, if I remember correct, a couple of years ago, paid twenty thousand dollars to get a nice good study put together, a good plan put together, we've included the community many times on the discussion. And so one of the things that we're looking at is how do we start pushing it forward, how do we start this study, this plan that was developed, how do we start pushing that forward? Because as a growing community, we need to start doing something to get that going. And so we're looking at how to start having town hall meetings and discussions to get, to get everybody onboard, make sure the community knows what's about to happen and be able to start the process of getting our downtown to be what that vision that we looked at, that's been discussed for year after year after year. We also discussed. A traffic garden, reference in conjunction with the intercity transit, I asked the public service, I will be getting some more information about it so they may be find a spot to be able to put that within our community so that kids can have a place to ride their bikes and learn the rules of the road while they're doing that. We also had discussions in reference to some sidewalk projects, so the, how do they put it? When we start discussing the six-year plan again, we can see about bumping those up to the six-year plan so that they can be, take a little bit higher priority, they're in our twenty-year plan, but we need to bump them up so they can take priority.
Which project?
Sidewalks. Councilmember Crossman can speak more to that one.
The sidewalk going down railway to connect middle to the downtown area, so that way their families and the housing developments around Fort Stevens can walk to the city park safely. Right now they can't with railway, I mean, they walk down railway, but it's not safe. So that's sometime important to me, since I live in that area.
And then also through one of the other organization, one of the other committees that I'm on, had the Young Prairie Line Trail, we have it scheduled and budgeted for up to the river, if I remember correct, we have that. There is a call for grants to be able to get more work done, so we can, one of the things I'm gonna communicate with Cody about is, is it possible, what will it take to get it from the railroad to the rest of the line that we own, if I remember correct, we own it and how can we go about approving it so we can have that connected trail go from McKenna and further that north all all the way down to Centralia? Other than that, that's all I have to report at this time.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Blair, any question?
Question real quick regarding the sidewalk, as we were just talking about. Would that be negated once the trail is completed?
No, the sidewalk is down the road, going from middle, which is by Fort Stevens, to basically the trailhead. Right now, it's walking outside the road.
Councilmember Roy.
I had our South Thurston Economic Development Initiative meeting on Friday of last week, we had a great conversation with the Thurston County Commissioners. They are looking at moving from a three-person commission to a five-person commission along with the Port of Olympia, they were waiting for population numbers to hit a threshold within Thurston County to do that together, so they're looking at moving that forward. And as we met at the, at the Nusqually Tribe Health and Wellness Center, the same place where we had our meeting not so long ago. And we got a a great update from the Nusqually Tribe, they're working on broadband connection through the rural communities in South Thurston County and North Lewis County. We had a presentation from Steve Dunk with the Department of Commerce and one of the things that he asked us in the communities to kind of bring back to our cities and then report back to him was what has the Department of Commerce done in our communities and what do we want them to do? So it's a conversation that I'll have with with Joe and Todd and and see if we can get that information, bring it back to Steve with some some good ideas for him. And then today I had the Agro Tourism Advisory Commission and we talked about the Bountiful Byway and Olympia, Experience Olympia and Beyond, we talked about corridor management and project and public offers, which is what we all love to talk about. Project and public offers, which is what we all love to talk about.
Fascinating.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
I attended the Public Services Meeting today with Josh and Brian, but they've already spoken about that. And the Squally River Council was a long meeting, but the most interesting part of it for me was that the brewery park at the Falls Terrace, they're putting up a new building over there. It's the Olympia Tumwater Foundation. And so it's going to be a new building, longhouse inspired, it's kind of indigenous, really cool floor plan. And it can be used by the public, regional outdoor education visitor center. It overlooks the falls, the upper part of the falls. So it sounds beautiful. And they're also gonna do a little tap house as a. Salute to the previous brewery that was there. So it sounds like an amazing project. And then. My own beautification initiative. I've been working on in the past couple of weeks, I've been doing a lot of research on public art. And there is a lot to read online. If anybody is interested, please go on. Every city around us has a public art program. And public art, in what I've read, is defined as art that the public can see at any time. So can't be in a closed building or in a museum, it's gonna be out in the public to be seen. So I think our mural project kind of qualifies for that. And I did not realize even our own Olympia, does anybody know how many murals they have in Olympia? Ninety-four, ninety-four murals in the city of Olympia. I had no idea. And they have a municipal art plan and one of their goals is to quote, provide a wide wide range of style. Media, subjects, and viewpoints to offer perspective interest for everyone, unquote, okay? The Bellevue Arts Commission is very interesting as well, and one of their bullet points was quote, they want to enlarge the art consciousness of Bellevue. That's pretty interesting. So what if we were to enlarge the art consciousness of Yell? So what I think is that we lack a process, it's obvious because we've never done this before. So I think I would propose that we would put this on a topic for a study session. And cities do it a different way. Some of them have arts commissions, some of them use the city administrator and the mayor, mayor and the council, everybody does it a different way. So we have to decide how we're going to do that. So we can implement things now and of course in the future. And then and also make use of the funds we've already designated for this project. Why have it there if we're not going to use it for some benefit? So what I thought of in the meantime is since we've done so much work already, we have talked to the owners of buildings. And got their consensus and got them excited about these projects. What about as a compromise solution? We try one mural, the one that everybody liked the most, Mickey's bowling ball. And just see how it looks, see how we like it, get feedback, do whatever we want, use it as a pilot project and just take it from there. Mickey's already spoken about the the connection to cosmic bowling. He didn't even realize he had. And when we went into the bowling alley, it's right there, almost a duplicate of Creole's work. And the other little fun part, I happen to know a few people that like Sasquatch. And Mickey and Mayor and Cree has offered to work with both of you to create something there on the building that would be whimsical and fun. And just as a side note, in back in Olympia, this made me laugh, I had no idea. They have a mural tour and where the mural tour starts, they have this mural, you are here, okay? I'll pass this around. Guess what? It's a picture of the mountain. And what's in the picture? There's a UFO. I'm like, oh my God, I had no idea. And upon further looking at this, because you can hardly notice it, but right there is a little Sasquatch. So we wouldn't be the only ones to do something like this. So I just offered as a suggestion to get it going and then maybe add it to new business after we've thought about it for a couple of weeks and put it at the next council meeting for a vote. And just start somewhere. That's what I'm gonna suggest.
Yeah, so. Thank you, councillor, is that your?
Oh, and here's Madonna with a UFO also fifteenth century. They may not have called it UFO, but it sure has one in there. Oh, one more thing, sorry. We asked Minuteman Press to break these prices down. The eighteen thousand was for six units of pictures. And I I'm assuming that's a better deal if you do it all at once. But when I asked them to just do the one for the bowling alley, it was like fifty-two hundred dollars. So if you wanna just take that out of the funds that we already have and we had promised another lady something on her building which was smaller, which was eighteen hundred dollars. So I've already talked to those guys.
All right. Well, for my report, I wasn't gonna chat about it much, but since you were. Go ahead.
I forgot one important thing. Cree said that if we do the Sasquatch because of your love for. She she offered to donate to you her original artwork, which will be worth a lot of money.
Councilmember Blair.
Quick statement. I think we do have a process is to take it to the Arts Commission.
We already did that.
Hold on, let him speak.
Take it to the Arts Commission, have them review it and then they'll come and make a suggestion. I will just say on my own, I'm not a fan of the vinyl print. Rather see it actually painted. We're gonna be doing anything like that. It's just my own two cents.
Combination.
Councilmember Roy.
You said that you had another mural that you had promised to.
Yes, there were some butterflies on one of the nail shops down the street. That we had promised to her because I was given the authority to go about and do this project, so I did. Things are different, so I you know, it's about keeping your work to someone too. I just wanted to say that this has been a long-term project with people. I don't wanna let people down.
So kinda in that same respect. Councilmember Kaminsky is saying that this has been approved. She's correct. It has been approved in the last budget. It was approved by council. There's myself, Councilmember Blair and Councilmember Kaminsky were on at that time. No one else from this council was and now Smith wasn't either at that point. But when he, this is for the, this probably would have been passed not last year, but the year prior to that in our biennial budget. So this is the second half of that biennial budget. Last year was the first half that took that went into effect. When council put something in the budget and they vote upon it. They have every right to do so. It touches what council member Kaminsky did for beautification. She was able to get fifty thousand dollars. It was voted on by a city council. That being said, at that point, it becomes the mayor's priority or. Proactive to actually implement it. The policy side of it is the budget item, having it put in that for beautification. How it's spent in there. Is up to the mayor. With the respect of the intent of it. And beautification in general doesn't necessarily have to go towards murals. There is a lot of different areas that beautification could go into. I was not mayor at the last time and I'm not gonna say one way or the other how previous administration handled that. But that was the right of that past administration to go ahead and enact those funds how they saw fit. When I came into office on January one. I wanted to do more of a. More of a. Established processes and procedures for spending this money. And that wasn't necessarily just handing a blank check to a council member or an individual to to go out and. Use taxpayer money on that. So I I understand the frustration that Councilmember Kaminsky is showing, especially for. A project that has been going on for, you know, a long time, about almost a year now, I'd say. And I apologize for that, but. I still have a duty as mayor to make sure that these funds are appropriated and spent the way that. Or spent the way that they were appropriated by council and for beautification. Now, when it comes to certain. Certain specific projects such as this. I think that that's all in your right to do if you wanna propose that within that budget and utilize some of those funds for, let's say, murals. But the correct process was to go through the Arts Commission, which they approved the project and endorsed it. And we brought it to council at that point. And the Arts Commission did presented to council. It was council's decision whether or not to move forward with that specific project. If council would have voted in favor of putting those murals on, I would have absolutely have gone forward with that and directed. Our public works or public services director to go and make that happen, our staff to make that happen. But that did not occur. At any point, the city council, if they do wanna do that, that's your right to do so. If you want something on the agenda, you know, you just have to get the second. And after it's seconded, have a majority vote, four votes, we'll get it on there. But for me. What we are doing though, to kind of help with this process and make it more defined, if you will, and more transparent in the process. Is we're looking to other cities, see what they do. And we gotta be careful without gifting public funds away. It you can't just give away public funds to a private individual or even a business without it being fair to everybody else. And the fair way to do this is to do it in a program, a funding program. And I wasn't gonna ask you to speak, chief, but we did some research on other cities, what they do. And do you wanna kinda go and explain the program that we're gonna hopefully share with council and. Be up to you to implement or not?
So did some research on to see what other cities are doing in regards to beautification processes and programs that they have in place. And we're able to find one up in Marysville. City of Marysville implemented what they call their Community Beautification Grant Program. Very detailed, great descriptive application process. It's extremely well put together. And so basically is what it is, is a business or even an HOA or residential. Person inside the city could submit an application to receive grant funding to improve. Whether it's a wall, windows, paint. You know, something in an HOA, a park, whatever it might be. A committee would review that application. If once the applications are approved, whatever this committee decided on, they would come to council. They would say these are proposals to fund. You would approve that. The businesses or HOA would pay for it out of their pocket. Once the project is done, it would be inspected by someone from the city to make sure it met the qualifications of the application. And that it was done within their application. And if it was done according to their application, they would then be given a grant to pay for that project that they paid out of their pocket to update their process.
Normally they aren't a hundred percent either, so it's matching funds. So if the city. We would, let's say. Seed, have some seed money for like, let's say five thousand dollars of this. And that five thousand dollars, we could do a little small pilot program where if council would like to do this, we could. Put five thousand set aside for just these projects. Business could apply for funding. It usually would be matching funding. So if they put fifty percent. Let's say a fifty percent match or whatever the council decides to be that amount, I would say some like fifty percent. So if. Businesses request a thousand dollar grant from the city, they would have to put in at least five hundred dollars of their own money to get this funding. So you wanna, I'm sorry to interrupt, you wanted to finish.
Yeah, so with the with the percentage of the funding and how much they kick in. With them completing the project first, it's their basically in-kind donations, they're doing the work, they're. They're implementing it and it's a time period. So the way it works in Marysville is by July one, all applications are due. They're reviewed in July, they're given out, they're brought to council in July. They're approved, projects have to be done by November. We come back to council and say these projects were completed according to grant application. They bring pictures, we visually inspect it, we involve the building department to make sure all the building codes are met. If it's in an HOA, they have to have signatures from the HOA and the board. If it's a neighborhood without an HOA, they have to have five neighbors sign the application to make sure that they support what they wanna do. And so you're able to get funding up to whatever we decide, whether it's twenty-five hundred, five thousand, Marysville's a seventy-five hundred. The second year is five thousand and after two successful years in a row, you can't apply anymore. So that gives other people opportunities to to use that. And so it seems to, it's pretty positive. If you go to City of Marysville, the website, actually take you right to the link and talk all about it and what it does. But the application process is very descriptive, very specific. Spoke to our finance director about it and talked about that process and how that would work. She was very happy with the accountability of the funds. And the fact that the council's involved with the process. And approving the applications and then distributing the money. So it's just an idea as we go forward, what we look at, and we're gonna talk about it more in depth at the council retreat. And I can show you what basically Marysville does and how it works and look at it from that. But it might be something to where we can help, not just businesses, but you're helping HOAs and neighborhoods, which I think is also fantastic. But you know, if somebody wanted a mural on their building, they could come in and say, you know, I'd like five thousand dollars to put this mural on my building. And we go through our process and if it's approved, we go back there. You know, they get it done the way it's agreed upon, they would then get refunded that grant money for that process. So it's just something that might help with the accountability and the tracking of this and and the process we're talking about because. There really isn't one, you know, and we've talked about beautification and arts for years and I know Terry's been involved with it for years. So. This is specific to beautification of private, so businesses, homeowners, HOAs. There's other beautification that can take place on city property. You know, for example, we've talked about our trees as you come into town. Lining them, maybe putting lights on them year round, have lighting up our downtown. That's our beautification, that's city-owned property. So that's a little bit different.
We're looking into actually.
Yeah, and this is this is grant funding for the private businesses. So if the businesses want to, you know, put planters in front of their business or whatever, it doesn't, it is, there's not real specific. They could submit an application and we could fund something.
Our fifty thousand dollars is the grant that the money is coming from?
Oh, I don't, we haven't even gotten there where it's coming from or how much would be in there. That's entirely up to.
That money could go towards it.
It's entirely up to council, how you choose to, you might wanna only fund ten thousand a year or fifty thousand a year. That's entirely up to council.
Councilmember Crossman.
Any of that fifty thousand have been spent yet and what?
No, it's not, nothing's spent.
I think there is some of it spent.
That was from the previous budget, of which there is money still left over.
But it's a biennial budget though.
Well, the fifty thousand that was just approved. This last go around has not been.
We'll find out, sure we'll update council on them out.
So just to make this clear, you're saying beautification is other things other than art or not necessarily?
It doesn't have to be specific, just beautification in general.
But it could be, it could be. Can I ask, is anybody interested in doing a pilot project with this one mural, just to see how it goes, see how it looks, see how it works?
Councilmember Blair, interested in both?
To be frank, and regarding this specific mural, again. Take it to the Arts Commission, have them review it, which they they did not bring a proposal to say, we wanna put this picture on this building. That didn't happen because we didn't vote on anything like that. We actually didn't vote on anything regarding it. We just talked about. Number two, regarding this fifty thousand dollars. I I no one wants to be straightforward. The idea that you, Councilmember Kaminsky, could go and do beautification projects, whatever it is that you wanted to do. And spend up to fifty thousand dollars. That, I don't know what agreement was going on previously. But I don't think anyone on this council is okay with a blank check of fifty thousand dollars for whatever beautification product one person wants to do. Now, you may be including lots of people in in ideas and decision-making and figuring out what is good. But at the end, it from my perspective, it seems like. You were under the impression that you had fifty thousand dollars, that you could just do whatever you wanted with and beautification. Without any kind of involvement of everyone else. And me, when I voted yes on that fifty grand, that is definitely not my understanding of what was happening. It was fifty thousand dollars being set aside for beautification projects, but. Automatically, I assume that there's gonna be projects individually coming about that would come forward and we would talk about it. And if that's what, something we wanna do, then we vote yes or no. Not that it was just fifty. Not that it was just fifty grand that could be spent on whatever. I don't know why no one has just straight out said that yet, but I'm not against any of it. I'm not, some of the images, I'm not that fond of. But I'm not against setting, doing public art in town, like I just want to be very clear about that. But as of right now, we do have a process. It's take a specific idea to the Arts Commission. The Arts Commission then comes to us with a proposal of what it's going to cost, what they want to do, and when they want to do it, and we say yes or no. Now, this other
Beautification Grant Program?
That, I think, is, is more tailored directly to non-city property. So, like, the HOAs, the private businesses, and when they want to do things and it kind of helps them not have to come out of pocket as much, but there's that accountability there. I love that idea, and I can't wait to hear more about it. But I just think it needs to, we need to clear the air that it's, it's not a fifty thousand dollars to just spend however we want.
Councilmember Roy then has.
I have twelve things in, in my list. I have looked at the Marysville Beautiful, Beautification Grant Program. I think it's a phenomenal process. It really reminds me of, of our LTAC process, and you guys, I sat on LTAC committee for, for a long time. And that's the same way. It's individuals or individual organizations who want to do something. So, they propose it to the LTAC committee, who then bets it, sends it to the council, and then the organizer of whatever it is pays for it, and then asks for reimbursement after proving that it was done to.
If council approves or disapproves.
Right, right, like in accordance. And there are, you know, reports that, that have to be sent back and, and stipulations, and, and it's very cut and dry. If you wanted to do a pilot program, stop me because I'm going to, it's not going to, this is not how it's supposed to be. Bring it up, put it, make a motion, get a second.
And that's what I was asking.
And, and see where we lie. That way, you know what, you know what you're working with.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was trying to ask. But may I, James, just to make it clear.
Hold on, we still have Councilmember Hess in it. Who do you, Councilmember Hess?
I just want to make sure we clarify for the public that's watching and everybody here. What was happening, and again, I'm going to use the past tense, what was happening was under the previous administration. The previous administration had taken the budget, had taken the fifty thousand dollars, and gave authorization through a council member to do accordingly what was to be done. We had an election that occurred last year. We have new council members. We have a new mayor with a new administration. That process is no longer happening. So, we don't need to dwell on that. We don't need to say that, to make the accusation or statements that Councilmember Kaminsky thinks she has fifty thousand dollars to whatever she wants. Current administration stopped that because the current administration corrected an error that was being done under the previous administration. Now, if I remember correct, when we discussed this whole thing, just a few weeks ago, we made the decision that future discussion of it was going to be done during our retreat. Nothing against doing the motion now, nothing about having a discussion now. But we all agreed, I could have sworn, we all agreed to discuss this during the retreat. And now we're discussing it again before the retreat and trying to make something happen, trying to do something actionable when the last, that I recall, the last actionable thing we did was said during the retreat, we will discuss beautification. We will discuss this fifty thousand dollar budget thing, and we will come up with a process to then do further discussion and make, actually into, as you call it, law. We're going to codify it. I, I don't mean to stop the discussion now, but I'm just kind of lost on, why are we trying to do something actionable now when we already did the action two weeks ago? Said during the retreat, we'll discuss this. It's tabled until then. Because if we're going to say, we're going to table something until a set date, and then the next council meeting, we're going to bring it right back up, why bother saying we're going to table something? I thought we had an agreement. Did we not? Correct me if I'm wrong on that. Did we not have that agreement? That we were going to table it until the retreat?
Definitely discuss. I don't think there was any formal vote on it, but yeah, I believe that was a general consensus that time. You're out of order, please. Wait to get called on. You had a public comment earlier on. If you want to discuss anything or bring anything up, if you want to bring up anything, an item, you could have done so at that time. This isn't the appropriate time now for the audience to, to speak out. We're going to go to Councilmember Kaminsky and then finish off any other questions.
I just wanted to let you guys know that Kathy can attest that in the minutes of the Arts Commission meeting, they approved the work that we brought forward.
And that is accurate. They did approve that.
So, when this was all new, I was given a different process, and I went through that process, and then here we are now.
Just to pull off that a little more. Councilmember Kaminsky did the process that she, that I had set forth for her starting as a new administration. And that part of that was to go through the Arts Commission, which did that and endorse that two projects. And at that point, they presented to council. At that point, there didn't seem to be interest from council to move forward with it as an action item. That's why I didn't put it forward on, on a future agenda. If I would have thought that, and if I misrepresented the council's views, please let me know. But if you do have a, even a second on it, we would absolutely put it on a future agenda, but.
I wanted to discuss just this one compromise, given disparity between these two years and councils. If we would consider this one item as a pilot project.
It doesn't seem like there's interest on this council to do that. I mean, this discussion is. Do we, do we vote on it? Is that what you're going to ask?
Yeah, and if not, we'll table it, but I'd like to know if anybody is interested in doing it.
Before you go, Councilmember Roy, this isn't a time under council member reports to ask for that vote. I do believe the next, the appropriate course of action is to discuss it at our retreat, as kind of discussed a little bit at the last meeting. And then either move forward with this program or this could absolutely be, the mural could absolutely be part of that program. They could apply for that and they could go through that. If you, the other option I've heard from council, it sounds like they would be favorable of, is if you brought another piece of art to the commission, whether it's Bowling Alley, just that specific one. And have them approve it, have them recommend it to council. At that point, the council would go and entertain that motion. If there was, if there is support for it, like if you made the motion to pass it, and you got a second, we would entertain that motion. Go through the process of voting on it and discussion and all that. Councilmember Blair?
Quick question. I'm genuinely curious why I feel like this is trying to be pushed to do something right now. Did you promise someone that we were doing something?
I know. It's, like I said, it's been an active discussion for over a year.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you promised someone something, and they were counting on some money, and that's what it feels like.
They weren't counting on money. And keep in mind, this is all gifted artwork as well. We, we were only looking at the process of getting these works of art on the walls.
Okay, so, from what I'm hearing.
It was a work in progress.
Let's continue the discussion at the retreat and not try to push something forward right now.
The treat is next month, so it's.
I, I was just merely updating my initiative, you know. That's fine.
Do you have a referent timeline?
We're doing it in a study session. We'll be on, on the agenda, yep, next week. Any other questions, comments on this part? All right, we'll go into my report and we'll look at. A lot of meetings, I'll just cover the, the ones that you probably want to hear about. We had a meeting with Evergreen College. They just came in, presented, introduced themselves, they had a new president and
Vice President.
Vice President. So, they introduced themselves, made themselves available to the city. Should we want to partner on certain projects? I, I did bring up like Saint Marnes, we did partner with them, their engineering school, or engineering department with those students. They don't have the engineering department, they have their other master's programs is for educators and teachers. And so, unfortunately, the city doesn't, you know, have teachers, but we can't help put them with the, with the schools and make a partner further. I went to the, to Ridgeline, chat with the seventh graders, that was pretty cool, talked about civics and elections and stuff like that. Had a meeting with the YMCA, the Nisqually Tribe, and the school district, not the school district, excuse me, Superintendent Brian Morton. Nothing was set in stone on any of those discussions, but what that did is talked about the partnerships that were possible that we could do, including property, letting the YMCA build on a piece of property. Talked about funding a little bit, different sort of funding sources. There's possibility Nisqually Tribe would be making some investments into it. Lots of different possibilities. But again, these are very early discussions, just to get some stakeholders at the table. The next step would be to bring this to the council and have a broader discussion on what the council would like to see on this and how would they'd like to, how y'all would like to see this move forward. And that'll be coming up here. We'll discuss it a little bit more at the retreat, and then at another council meeting, we'll have Cal Cronk, the CEO for South Sound YMCA, come out here, discuss it a little bit further, and see what they can bring to the table. And if he owns, wanting, or if the city council's wanting for YMCA to come out, they want to see support. I would personally would hope to see the council support it, but it's your prerogative to do as you wish. So, that, that'll keep, that'll be going. I'll follow up with both, with both the school district and with the Nisqually Tribe, see what their thoughts are on it, because they'll bring it back to each of their respective bodies. Had a meeting with the farmer's market, that will basically talk about the parameters set for, for them to operate out here. We like to move them towards the street long-term, very similar to what you see in some other communities. Is a fair outside and vendors outside. That would also alleviate what opened up the community, community. I can't talk right now. Thank you, center. The community center for other places, other organizations, private citizens all. Instead of having just the farmer's market utilize that building every Saturday, we do generate some money from residents. We are talking about restructuring our rental process as well. So, instead of anyone that's a nonprofit just getting it for free, there would probably be a nonprofit that we propose. Council would obviously have to approve, but we would propose a nonprofit rate to kind of recoup some of those losses. Because it's, I mean, regardless of what rate we charge, unless it's hundreds of dollars, it's, we're going to take a loss, and you know, that's normal for a lot of city, city buildings and community centers across state. These aren't moneymakers necessarily. We try to recoup as much of our labor costs and all that. But these are amenities for our citizens, so taxpayer dollars to pay for these buildings. So, that said, also talked to the library, the Tamaral Library. We are in discussions with them. One of the biggest was actually, one of the bigger parts of that discussion is to see if we can't get them to consider moving out and do a new building in Yon. Yeah, they are very supportive of that, actually. They were wanting to, they don't think that that building's necessarily the, that's fit for a library. And it sure costs the city a lot of money each year, fifty thousand at least, on top of the over a million dollars that we paid to buy the condo. So, we are looking and exploring that to save money for the taxpayers. And that about wraps it up. Is there any questions for me on any of that? Councilmember Blair?
Regarding YMCA, you mentioned that they want to see support from us. Assuming that means they would want the city to chip in money to build.
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, because the, the only thing I have that concerns me there is I kind of feel like the goalpost. Couple of years ago, we had the same discussion, and at that point, their concern was whether the school bond was going to get passed, which obviously it did. Still haven't seen any movement.
Regarding that, yeah, so the first bond that passed, it didn't pass on its first try, I think it was three times, I want to say. On the third time, it passed? At least twice, so at least. The third time it did pass, and the third time was Trump apparently. But the first time was when we were discussing that at first. At the same time, they are also looking at other areas that were ready. And apparently, is it Shelton? Was that the, the one that got built? I believe it was Shelton location. Shelton or Aberdeen, Sheldon? Yeah, thank you. Sheldon got, was in a similar boat as us. And they were prepared at that time, they did to believe past theirs or whatever that the YMCA asked of them. And he had more of their ducks in a row than we did at the time. And, you know, it's a different council now, it's a different mayor, so I think there's going to be some different discussions and topics on that. So, partnerships could look differently. It doesn't necessarily have to mean just dollars from, from the city of Yon. It, it can look at its property, maybe we could do, like similar to what we do for the Boys and Girls Club, we sit out for a dollar a year, whatever we charge. So, there's a lot of different partnerships we could do. But the whole point is to get to YMCA with a sway pole inside of Yon, which is.
In that property right there.
Yeah, maybe. Councilmember Hess, or excuse me, Councilmember Crossman, I look at, I'm sorry, Councilmember Crossman then Hess.
I would like to see a, you know, maybe a preliminary presentation about, I know nothing about YMCA. I drove by their buildings, and people say they have a pool, they like it, they work out, and that's all I know about them. So, I would like to have some info, if they want to present that, what they are, who they are, what they do, how they make their money, all, all that stuff.
Absolutely, but you knew that. Councilmember Hess?
Going to your conversation about the farmer's market. You talked about wanting to put it onto the street, is that correct? If I remember correct, I was for a short time, they said they weren't able to go to the street due to facility situations. Is that going to?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, yeah, that was absolutely part of the discussion. There's some other solutions that we're looking at, or possibly the public safety building, possibly the community center, just the bathroom portion of it. So, yeah, there's some other solutions, but yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put them out or anything. It's likely, I'm not going to change for this year. It's going to probably be in the future, because they're in, I think they're last year of their contract this year. And so, it would be for future negotiations, future contracts, and yeah.
No, no, I, I, I think it's a great idea to put it into the street, because then it could be like a party, things like that. But I remember that there was a reason why they couldn't.
No, you're absolutely right. That was one of the biggest reasons was they needed restrooms. Any questions on it? Well, that said, good meeting, good discussions.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.